Commissioner Ware, would you kindly leave some of the eligible agents to her?
I move this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Let's move on to the next discussion, motion to approve. Last, most of the last.
Movement presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think the founder is here early discussion.
That's nice. Uh, the order one.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to previously defined arguments.
Movement presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, next one. Mr. McFatz in this area.
My.
Couple of grand awards to serve my, um, nicely done. It was yesterday. Thank you for that.
No, thank you. I appreciate the support. Uh, so I have two items, um, that actually came in unexpectedly. The first is a $500, uh, they call it a grant, uh, from the, uh, New Hampshire Charitable Trust. Um, it was the Mary Alice and Camp Warner Family Support Fund. Um, it was unexpected, uh, came in around Christmas time. Um, in the amount of $500 and to be used for equipment or whatever, uh, is needed to further, uh, the needs of the diversion program. Uh, by getting this grant, we were able to line out the money in the budget that we asked for, for the new printer. Um, this, this actually is a hundred dollars more than what we were looking for. So we asked that we accept the 500 to buy the printer. The diversion program.
Wait, what would you be receiving this?
We've already received.
We've received this.
Oh, you already received it, so.
So we just are asking the commissioners to formally accept the award.
Okay, so, uh, we'll do this award first, first, and I move acceptance of this award to Mr. McFatz. Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Very good. And we also have another grant here.
So it's, it's, this is from the New Hampshire Juvenile, uh, Diversion Network that we, this is normally our expert screener contract that we do every year. Uh, and we, you know, it runs on the fiscal year, um, based on the state, um, fiscal year as opposed to our calendar year. Um, and the contracts came through very late this year, uh, due to the fact that this large amount of money came into the Governor's Council, um, which was then awarded to the diversion network. And then they, um, proportioned it out to the different credited programs. Uh, normally we get $250 for each expert screener that we do on each juvenile that comes through the program. And that's normally gives us an amount at the end of the contract year. Um, in the area between 6,800 and, and I think we've been as high as 8,200 at one point. Um, this came in at a much higher rate. Um, with it though, did come some different, um, requirements in our contract. So we use the only file expert screener information on a quarterly basis. With this, it's now requiring it by the fifth of every month. They also, um, provided laptops that hold the juvenile information, um, that allow, um, for all the programs to be operating on the same software program, uh, for that data collection, uh, called Red Cap. And that's the, the data collection also is to help, um, perpetuate our program out into the schools, um, and, and try and develop the programs, get new schools to uh, jump on board with us. And we've done that with, uh, NuFone as well as, uh, InterLakes is, is going to be coming back on board with us. Uh, again, uh, here real soon as well. So this is in a much higher amount. This is a one-time, uh, award. I would expect that, uh, when we go into our 25, 26, it'll probably go back to the 250 per screener. We've already received the first half of this for June or July 1 through the end of December. Um, second half, I had an email, uh, from Alyssa Cannon, who's the, uh, Director of, of the whole network that indicated that the second half award could be less depending on what happens out of the federal government with what they award to us.
What was the, excuse me, what was the first installment that you received? It was an email.
It was half of the 53,130.
So it would have been a little over 26,000.
Okay, so you're anticipating somewhat less for the second half?
They, they.
Not fulfill the requirement of 50,000.
Sent an email saying that it could be reduced depending on federal funding, but I don't, I don't believe that it'll be reduced because President Trump is, has always been supportive of the juvenile justice reform. He's the one that actually started this in his first term. So I would expect, and I have not seen, um, across the board, any reduction in federal law enforcement. They, they're pro-law enforcement. They are pro-court, pro-program. So I think that, that we can probably anticipate that we'll get the full award, but they did send us an email saying we don't know until we know. Um, so the second, second half of this could be reduced. It's potentially to be reduced. What that reduction would look like, I couldn't tell you because again, it would depend on what actually came to the state.
It, it looks like a very useful grant. Am I missing any strings that may be attached here or going through it? I don't really see anything.
We're already doing, the only thing that changed really with this contract was the monthly reporting requirement from a quarterly requirement for reporting and the use of the Red Cap program, which is software and hardware that they provided to us at no expense to the county. So it's just mandates that we use that and we report our data on a, on a monthly basis as opposed to quarterly. Other than that, the contract is exactly the same as past contracts.
So this amount might go in as revenue?
Yes.
We have it. We have put the first installment went in as 2024 revenue and this, uh, we have an anticipated revenue of 26,000 in the 2025 budget.
Does that do anything to reduce the bottom line of your budget or?
It does.
Yeah, I mean technically you would net the two numbers together. The expense is 181,000 roughly and then it's be offset by close to 30,000 revenue, I think.
But we already counted for that budget.
Yes.
So, but no change.
No change. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just another uh, requesting the board to accept the award.
All right.
That's great.
Yeah, I like it.
Make a motion that we accept.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, there's a, um, natural update coming up. Um, can we start? Lauren, how are you?
How are you?
How are you thinking? We'll start with the 2024 revenue and expense. So at this time, I don't expect any further expenses or revenues to be coming in for 2024. Um, the last item we were waiting for was the fourth quarter Medicaid incentive. Um, we received that last week approximately, um, based on prior year receipts, I had approved for that 245,000. Um, the actual receipt was 246,103. So, uh, right where we expected it to be. The revenue surplus is 820,476. The expense surplus is 595,174. Um, so the two of those combined adds 1,415,650 to fund balance. Um, you have a fund balance report and that has taken into consideration the recommended nursing home accounts receivable write-off, uh, which we're going to discuss shortly. And so with the write-off included, the amount added to fund balance for the end of year 2024 is a million 321,174 uh, for an end fund balance of 4,915 dollars. Uh, 400, I'm sorry, 4,915,900. So using a million three for the 2025 budget, we use the year-end 2025 fund balance projection of 3,615,900, which is within policy. Um, the 2025 revenue and expense, we are at 12% through 2025. Your reports include the anticipated budget. Revenue is on track, even though the collective overall shows 5%, that percent seems low. But it's due to revenue that we receive monthly, quarterly, annually, um, such as, uh, the county attorney's office, the gun stock receipt, court security, health and human services and pro-share. So things like that. Obviously we'll affect that number. We're earning 4.33% interest for our deposits and we earned $20,246 for the month of January. Expenses are on track also. Uh, overall spending is at 10%. There are some departments that show a higher amount of spent percentage. Um, and that's due to things, um, like workers and unemployment, um, property and liability insurances or other one-time expenses, uh, that will level out as the year moves forward. Um, there is, I wanted to point this out. There is a line on your report, if you noticed it, for the 2025, the spend nursing home admin property and liability insurance is actually showing it's 197% spent. It is not. Um, there's an amount in there that was reclassed to the correct department and it means done after these reports. Um, the cash flow, we currently have a cash position of, uh, approximately 1.1 million. Um, we are in the process of securing a tan with a closing date of March 3rd. Um, as we get bids and the treasurer reviews and the tan dots are ready, um, for signatures, going to communicate that information. I don't have the exact date for that yet, uh, but it will be sometime next week. Um, AR collections remain between 96 and 98%. Again, uh, on that report, some of those percentages are higher and the reason for that is because of, uh, items being collected from prior months. Uh, we are starting 2025 with 168,367 dollars and receiving 10,244. And that's a really pretty great place to be for that end of year. Um, a portion of that amount is part of the recommended write-off that, uh, we're going to be discussing next. Questions on that?
Hello?
The expenditures for 25.
Yes.
Safe to say that these are all ordinary and customary expenditures? There's been nothing out of the ordinary?
100%.
And on the tans, we do not have bids yet?
We do not have them yet.
When, when is that?
Uh, that is scheduled for Monday next week to receive them.
What, what do you mean the pro-share? Is that, that what we expected it to be?
So we expected with the budget, I think it's the number on there, 2,500,000. Thanks. Um, that's where we expect it to be, but I have been part of some of the meetings, um, lately and it, it's one of those things that we hope we're going to get that, but when the time comes, I feel like we're kind of at the mercy of, of the state and what we actually get. Oh, oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's already been tomorrow.
Oh, your meetings. We should learn more tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
Probably we won't have a number though. Yeah.
Commissioner Ware? Next report.
Next off.
You're welcome.
Good news.
Um, so next on the agenda is the recommendation for a write-off.
No.
Um, so the nursing home administrator and I work with our, uh, billing gals and we come up with this either based on the information that we have, um, from them and we've all reviewed together regularly throughout the year. Um, so the recommended write-off for 2024, 62,238 dollars. Um, the represent, are the write-off represents resident accounts which have been deemed uncollectible. Um, so currently there is $45,000 that's in the allowance for doubtful account and um, that amount of money affected the fund balance in 2023. Um, obviously there's a difference between that and what we're recommending of 17,238. And so that 17,238 would affect the 2024 fund balance, which if we go back to my previous report, we included that in the fund balance report. Um, second to that is we'll put another amount in through the allowance for doubtful account. Um, we've been running about 45,000, but because of a few things that we've seen over the last year and actually recommending that be 60,000 instead of 45. Um, and so to get there, the impact of that entry is 77,238. So 77,238, the 17, 238, I'm just realizing those two numbers. Oh, that makes sense. Um, yeah. Uh, the combination of those two numbers is 94,476 dollars that would impact the fund balance in 2024. Um, there, the reason for my recommended increase on what we're putting in the allowance is, um, twofold. One, it seemingly takes at least a late, it takes longer for, um, Medicaid to approve some accounts. Um, and in the meantime, we can have, um, President's pass and at that point it's too late. We're not getting that. The other part of that is a managed care insurance and, um, that's something that we're finding we're not as apt to get paid um, at all or even timely, um, timely or at all.
By managed care. We have one incident where we had a resident that was a managed care plan. They told us that it was arranged and approved and we took the patient long-term care. And then we ended up, they switched and said, no, they were still under the managed care plan. So their bill, uh, get paid and we went, appealed it twice and I even, we went as far as the insurance, New Hampshire Insurance Commission and it got denied. So we have to be, um, really proactive. I don't know, getting something in writing if somebody does change their managed care plan and the hospital tells us they did. And we have something officially with a certification number or a confirmation or something like that because most plans, um, have been able to change at the first of the month. Um, if they want to, but now we're seeing more managed cares that it's, they're telling people they can only change once a year in January if they, if they've gone onto a managed care plan.
And we're seeing more managed care plans than we used to.
Yes.
Uh, Shelly, on the, the managed care patient, if you had a do-over, anything you could have done differently in the way that you know now? You're still locked out. And on the, uh, the resident who unfortunately passed prior to Medicaid approval, how much time elapsed from the initial application for Medicaid approval, the time of that resident's passing?
Um, no, that was right here, February 23rd. Yeah, February 23rd and I don't have this date. I'm, yeah. Means less than a year. Maybe five months.
Isn't that an unusually long waiting period to get confirmation of benefit?
Oh, we've seen people now eight months waiting. There's only, they've cut the limited amount of people that, representatives that are doing Medicaid applications um, with a lot of the budget cuts. So people are waiting and not getting Medicaid approval. It used to be a lot quicker, maybe 90 days if you went to, um, uh, I want to say Service Link, but now there's less and less. You have to have financial approval and medical approval and trying to line up all those people to be able to get your Medicaid, plus all your bank statements, all your trusts, all your legal paperwork. Um, it's taking a lot longer.
So that's bureaucratic, something that they are.
Yes, yes. The only thing that's good and I've talked with, um, uh, Connie Administrator, Shaka, we've put in now a form that allows us to see what people are missing so we can help them with what is missing. It's like a read-only. So we can see, okay, what they might have got for a notice to the family. You're missing bank statements. You're missing a P O A, power of attorney. You're missing this. So we can help them by seeing that, getting the paperwork and uploading it for them because a lot of people don't have that ability.
Makes sense. So these just pay representative finance that are unflexible?
Yeah, we're not going to be able to get.
Not, okay.
We're just trying to understand the math for the last difference here. The total intact of nine to four, four seventy six.
Yeah.
How do we get to that number?
So it's the difference of the 62 to 38, the write-off.
It's the write-off for 24.
Yeah.
And then you want to increase the allowance from 45 to 60.
Yeah. So if you turn, you should have another page that shows the allowance for doubtful account. And in order to, because I'm taking more than what's in there and reducing it down, do you, do you have it? Can I, can I bring this up to you?
Sure, please.
Please. Thinking if we leave the allowance alone, I guess I do know that.
Oh.
I think so if we fix, if we expend the entire 62, 238 of bad debt in 24, it takes care of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then if we increase the allowance by 15,000, wouldn't the, the total net of fund balance just be the 77,238? Where we didn't, we, we'd expense another 15,000 and increase the allowance. So, so I think 17,238 is kind of twice in that number at least. It's all fall on it.
We also wanted to increase, right, 45 to 60.
If we take the whole 24 expense of 62 and just extend that against fund balance to take care of that piece. The next step, if we want to increase our, our allowance.
I see what you're saying because we're going to.
60, it's already sitting there. So we have another into that. So the, so the actual net.
We can take that.
Balance is only 77,238.
Yes. If we can hit the fund balance, uh, yeah.
So the, the net decrease in the fund balance is then the 77,000 number.
Correct.
Yeah, 77 to 38.
So a motion for, to approve the write-off amount.
Okay.
You mean, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Hi, John. John Bossy is here.
John, I'm coming out of office now. Um, I think all of it.
Yeah.
Every day I wake up, it's one more day before for the spring and.
Yeah, same here.
Very thankful for that.
Same here.
Um, so I, I did an RFP and the bids opened yesterday afternoon at noon time. To replace two pumps in the nursing home, um, boiler, for the boilers, pump number one, pump number two, that circulate, um, boil water throughout the nursing home, the sheriff's office, as well as the administration wing. We got two bids, um, one from K P M B for 27,700 dollars. Another from Wookiee Coal Mechanical, 46,140 dollars. Um, my recommendation is, is K P M B. They've been doing excellent, excellent work here. They're doing the domestic water system um, in the nursing home right now, as well as the new boiler and the J L. And they've been, um, excellent to work with. So I feel wholeheartedly, um, confident recommending him for that. The money is coming from, um, the nursing home budget under building improvements. And, um, Shelly put 43,500 dollars in her budget for this, for this project. Um, we have one of the pumps that's failed, so we're on one pump. And if that pump fails, then, um, we would have no heat in the nursing home, the sheriff's office or the administration wing. Um, the pumps, once you, if you approve, um, have a three to four day lead time, we'll probably be able to get them in, up and running next week. Good.
So, uh, do we know how old these pumps are? How long they've been in service?
1996.
That's, 30 years is very good for a pump.
Yeah.
And no, probably too old to rebuild, probably.
They looked at rebuilding them, um, through F A AAA Electric in Manchester and the price was so, so close.
Take replacement, no kidding.
And then these pumps are Grunfoss pumps, so they have variable frequency drives built right into them. So they'll have a huge electric savings to us as well because the pumps are actually 10th worth power motors.
They, they must be three-phase over there.
They are 208 volt, three-phase. Um, so the new pumps will, will save a lot of money on electricity use.
And one and two, right now you're running exclusively on two B as one's nailed. And one and two, right now you're running exclusively on two because one's nailed. And they're, they alternate, one, one backs up and then
Ideally, when the two pumps are there and fully functional, they, they go through what's called lead lag.
Okay.
And our building automation system lets them run for a certain number of hours, then it switches to the next one and that runs for a certain number of hours, just switching back, so they stay. So they have the same amount of runtime on them.
So we'll be getting two pumps?
Yes, correct.
Did triple A pump offer you anything as far as replacements? Do they have pumps that would?
Um, they did, but not of this type that we wanted to put in. Um, we've been, as we've been doing these projects in the county, we've been using Grunfoss pumps, which are um, they have built-in variable frequency drives and they're very, very good quality.
That's the brand that's there now, that, that we're, same brand?
No, the ones that are in there now are just um like Bellin, Gossett, and ones that take out and they actually have like a different electric motor and then a different bearing assembly and a different pump assembly. They've been kind of moving years, posped and repaired.
So Wicked Cool came in very heavy. Did they quote you a different product?
Same, I provided in the um, in the RFP, the actual submittal for them, for everybody who bid, um, to bid out, it's for apples.
Your recommendation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. You said you can get them in in a few days?
Yeah, so I'll um notify the vendor tomorrow with a P O, um, follow up with a physical phone call. He'll get them ordered up. Um, I would anticipate we'd probably have them physically here on site, maybe by Wednesday or next week, and then they jump right into installing them.
Sounds good.
Yes.
All right, good work.
Thank you.
Deborah, do we have other business?
If you would like, I had a request to review the work of the Budget Review Committee.
Sure.
Um, I gave you a printout. It was the last thing in your packet. We could follow along if you want to, and I'll do my best because it was a last-minute request.
Oh, and I was the last minute request. Uh, so we, I just wanna make sure that, well, two things. So the Budget Committee Review Team has, they're finished, they've concluded their meeting.
Yes.
And this is the result of their motions and their changes.
Yes, this will be their recommended, their budget recommendation to the full delegation.
And were there, were there records of their votes in or minutes of, of the actions that they took?
There are minutes. They are not very detailed and they only took one vote, which was on the bottom line.
On the bottom line?
Yes.
And how did, how was, how did that vote, what were the numbers of that vote? Was it unanimous? Of all committee members that approved this, or what was?
I don't remember. Do you remember? All right, Angela has notes.
There were a lot of divisions yesterday, a lot of three, three votes. And basically, they tabled a lot of the votes on line items to present before the full delegation. Deborah, am I correct?
You are.
So this is not the work of the, the committee and not?
This is the committee's recommended budget. There were certain line items that certain individuals both were opposed to.
Okay.
But the majority prevailed. They did a consensus.
They voted the bottom line?
Yes.
That vote was what?
Do we have it? We don't take the minutes for their meetings, so I don't have the vote either. But it was a majority vote, was in favor, thirty-seven thousand, seven sixteen to twenty-two.
So what's the
Okay.
Bottom line increase for that vote?
The increase in the amount of taxes to be raised is six point two percent.
But the increase over the twenty-four budget to twenty-five is, I believe, uh, Angela, three point nine? Was that the number?
I thought it was four point one.
I could be.
I could tell you what it is.
Please.
Um, it was four point one.
Okay, I stand corrected. I thought it was three point nine.
And so what areas of note do we have, have concern with? Uh, it's just
I don't think there are any great
Page two, and I already have concern that the administration, they cut legal five thousand bucks. And historically, we, we have
Right, we will spend more than that and that will be a problem, yes. Yeah, they, they just were intent on cutting that, so they did.
Book Commissioner Waring, we expect to enjoy full transfer authority going forward to the county here. Have we not been assured by the chair?
We hope for it. We, we've not been assured by anyone. And
Okay.
Yeah, much, you know, we'll we need to spend more legal funds, just like we did last year. We spent double what they budgeted.
Right.
And that's very likely gonna happen again.
Right, and again, just coming back to, you know, early summary of where we finished twenty-four and the, and the the operational savings that all the department heads and the, and the county recognized is, is, is far lower than it, it has been.
Yes.
So luckily, we had some unanticipated revenues and so our fund balance it did have a, a positive movement, but if, if this trend continues, continuing to underfund the expense side of, of the county operations, then we're gonna be back where we were several years ago and not have any fund balance.
Right.
So I, I, I hope that that the, those delegation members that are, have to vote the budget are aware of the consequences they, they, they could be creating in future years, very well, as soon as next year.
I believe they're aware of it.
I believe the Budget Committee is aware. I question whether the full delegation is aware.
And are they, are they aware in the fact that the, the problem they're creating and they just don't seem to wanna recognize that it's a problem?
They feel a stronger desire to, to reduce the amount raised by taxes. That's their, appears to be their overwhelming goal.
Okay.
Regardless of um future financial position of the county.
So it's, so it sounds like they're, they have a position, they, they wanna reduce county services.
They may. I, they didn't talk about that.
I don't know how we continue to go year, year, year after year a level-funded expenditure budget from several years ago and continue to provide the same level of services that we do. So I, I, I hope that they're open to have that conversation that that's, if that's their goal, then, that's fine, but then we need to have a greater conversation, start talking about what county services they want us now, no longer to provide.
Right. Uh, there were individual conversations um about that and what, what county services are not required. So I know that, that some of them, you know, much of the uh discussion happens not in this room.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't say what individual members know or don't know or what they're, based on what their actions are in public. They wanted to reduce the amount to be raised by taxes as low as possible.
Okay. What we the commissioners and what the county administration and the department heads are, are attempted to do on several occasions is to indicate the actual impact per thousand dollars on ownership share as a county member. And I believe the increase on this budget from last year, was it six cents per thousand?
Yeah, on the average county tax rate, the average of all ten towns in the city would go up uh, six cents, five, five or six cents.
Five or six cents, so.
With this budget. I think it's incredibly impressive that I just, the general, the general fund increase in expenditures is two percent. You know, in this uh inflationary time, everything.
Two percent more for everything.
Yeah, it, that, that's remarkable and there is, does not seem to be a desire to wanna cut in the nursing home budget. So that leaves very few options for them.
Right, that's, that's kind of my
Yeah.
There was an attempt to, to zero-fund, zero-fund restorative justice.
Mm-hmm.
That was reinstated at last year's budget line.
Well, actually, they left it at the proposed amount.
Okay.
Okay.
They talked about cutting ten thousand, twelve thousand, all of it, none of it.
There was some discussion about the sheriff's carports. Um, there's a thirty thousand on proposal by the sheriff's department. Uh, they asked the sheriff to hold off on that for this year. He indicated that he understood, so there were hunting and pecking here and there. But in all the budget meetings, county administration, commissioners always indicated each cut you make has consequences. And we don't wanna put ourselves in a position where we're, A, cutting services or attempting to lay off union employees, which is not allowed. So um, when we go before the full delegation on March twelfth, Commissioner, I, I'm hoping that the body at large, all eighteen members, have a clearer understanding of what the consequences of these, of these line item reductions have on the operation of the county.
Okay. So were there any significant reductions in any department that?
I don't think, I don't, not, I don't think there's anything that we are, uh, that we really feel is going to affect the operation. Um, certainly if they had significantly reduced funding for restorative justice, then, you know, then the commissioners would have a a discussion to have about that, what you want to do with the services. You know, I think it's clear the delegation can pick at their number. They get to pick the number and you get to operate the county.
Right, but I mean, if they, if they made a statement and directed that we're going to zero-fund restorative justice, then they have made the decision.
Okay.
Well, I, I
I don't know any other, any other way around.
I believe they, they've agreed to leave that balancing from last year.
Right, and, and, as, as it stands today.
But all bets are off on your
Review Committee is, is supporting that, at least.
Yeah.
Whoever
Majority.
Whoever voted, and I would like to know who voted what way. I think
They, they
We should have that in, of a record.
They didn't take votes. They went around and did a consensus. How, do you agree? Do you agree? Do you agree?
Okay, so who agreed and who didn't agree?
All right, we'll have to check the video because I'm sure that won't be recorded in there.
Commissioner Waring, what I found very singular yesterday, I think county administrator will agree with me, is there were a lot of evenly divided votes, a lot of deadlocks. And I think that indicates when the full body convenes, it's gonna be very divisive on these, on these line item votes.
Yeah, some of them are trying to prepare a budget that they think the greater body will like.
Well, that's my whole point in trying to find out what the, what the actual record is and what they voted, because this committee was charged by the delegation to, to come forth with their budget recommendation.
Right.
So that's what we have, and I just wanna make sure we've got a public record of, of what their, their consensus vote was, whether they, it was a formal vote or not. Sounds as if, it sounds as if it was an informal, an informal vote, and that's still a vote, say, yes, I'm so in support of it, or no, I'm not, and I'm not sure how they, to me that, they took a vote because they, they needed to put forth a recommendation. So in the majority, they said, we are in majority of this.
Right.
So those that are in support should be recognized, those that are, did not support should be recognized, because I'm, I'm optimistic that when we come to the full delegation, those that said they were in favor of this will support this to the full delegation. And if not, then I'm not sure why we went through this exercise, because they didn't actually do the job that they were asked to do by, by the full charge of the delegation.
Well, they made cuts.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that.
They did put the time in it.
Right, and they're gonna make And they did.
They're gonna offer their recommendation to full delegation.
Only in two instances, they said, we defer to the full delegation. And luckily, they stopped doing that after two, because I, I agree, they had a job to do and deferring was not it. So I think only in those two instances, they said, we'll just leave it and see what the full delegation does with it.
And what were those two instances?
Uh, restorative justice and uh what was it?
CASA.
And CASA, that's correct.
Of the outside agencies.
Yeah. Uh, no, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not it. Um, what was it? Um, I don't think so, because I, I have, they left some of those. I mean, they took CASA out.
They, they
U N H, they
U N H, they raised from sixty-five to seventy-two or seventy-seven. They did give U N H, not the bump requested, but they did get a bump.
All right, maybe it was U N H or
And it was mental health.
Orange or something.
Yeah, when they changed their mind, um
Treat the mental health, they cut half.
Cut half, yeah, not selfish.
Yeah, and they were all, all uh comfortable that. U N H, they ended up leaving. Yeah, they made decisions on all, so maybe it was U N H and they just said, we'll let the full delegation decide if they wanna do anything different with that. But this review committee left it as requested. Most of, they, they took forty thousand out of the outside agencies and thirty thousand was the sheriff's garage. That's what they did yesterday.
Certainly, Commissioner Waring, on, on the uh twelfth should any proposed cuts arise and look like they're gonna be agreed upon by the majority will be there to say, you're gonna take this out, this is what's going to happen. They need to know, they need to clearly understand the correlation. Especially those not on the budget, who've been tied up and gogged with legislation down there. What other business do we have?
I don't have any other. If you have no other questions.
Do we have any public comments? See, one, young lady in the back corner, it looks like she has something to say.
She, you said something to say, but I can't hear.
But they're not here. And I, Deborah, I believe we can go to no problems?
If one of you is making motion.
Double.
And another one would second it.
Okay.
Then I will ask you're all in favor, Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Spanos?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.